All right. The time is 6:05 and we have reconvened from executive session. We, at this time, we're going to recess the executive session until item 26 of the regular agenda. The time is 6:06. Now, we're going to move into our regular meeting. So, welcome, everyone. We appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Today is Thursday, June 6th. This is a regular meeting of the Leander City Council. At this time, we're going to do the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Chris Cernic. And at that time, remain standing for our pledges.
All right. Please stand with me. Father, we just come before you, a humble city, looking to move forward in your grace, God. We are so grateful for the people that are the citizens of the city. We are so grateful for those that serve the city, and especially, especially our first responders, God. A day like to this, day like today, 75th anniversary of D-Day, Lord, we just give all the glory and all the praise and just all the recognition of those that put their lives before us so we can have the freedom to even speak to you right now and to be able to, um, to govern a great city, Lord. So, um, we just ask you to bless the decisions and anoint the decisions, Lord, that not only council makes, but also the city staff mend and continue to prosper relationships, not just here in this city, Lord, but in this entire region. Um, Lord, we just ask you to rein your spirit down on us and prosper this city in Jesus' name.
Amen. All right. The United States pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. At this time, Ms. Crountree, if you'll do the roll call.
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson. Councilmember Jason Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sutter Quest.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chris Cernic.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
And Mayor Troy Hill.
Here.
We do have a quorum. We can do business. At this time, we're going to proceed to citizen comments. When I read your name, please come up to the lectern, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes. I have one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Scott Colain. What? For citizen, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry, I saw this. Sorry, I saw the numbers. We'll go, Scott, do you want to go first? You don't want to go first? All right. So, Karen Thompson. How about Ms. Thompson?
My name is Scott Colam, 2309 Grand Lake Parkway, Leander. And I am here really on behalf of the Leander Public Arts Commission. I had originally planned on a nice PR stunt tonight where we had the, we would have the room filled with drummers inviting you to follow along in a drum circle on your desks or whatever, but that didn't turn out. But I wanted to come here anyway and promote two things. First, this Sunday, as every second Sunday of the month the Public Arts Commission does, we're going to have an event at the library. It varies each month. One month it could be hand lettering, or plain air drawing, or painting, or something like that. This Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00, it's going to be sort of an open-mic song swap format, where we're inviting local musical artists, solo singer-songwriters, hopefully who have more original music than anything else, come in and play a couple songs. Every artist will get 10 minutes. It's limited to 12 artists. If we get more than that, then we'll reserve a spot for the ones who didn't get a chance to play at, at the next time we do this. Should be a lot of fun. Then, next Saturday, on June 15th, if you don't already have something on your calendar, write this one down. The Leander Public Arts Commission is sponsoring the Public Arts Festival, or the Leander Arts Festival, at Bledsoe Park, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's going to be a day of music, of art. We've got, I think, 20-something different art and artisan vendors showing up to sell their stuff. We're going to have a juried art competition with a lot of artists from Artists of Central Texas showing up, I think. And then, a full slate of music, starting at noon, with a community drum circle everybody's invited to participate in. At 1:00, we will have either an open stage or a slot filled by somebody who shows real well at the open mic on this Sunday. And then, at 2:00, J.D. Wellfed, a solo singer-songwriter. At 3:00, Indian and the Jones, a bluegrass band that's been featured at the Bluegrass Festival here in Leander a number of times. And at 4:00, award-winning, all-female young women called the Tiara Girls will close out the show. And at 5:00, that'll lead right into the performance in the park, which I think Mark will talk about later in the, the update on parks. I'm sure he'll mention that. He will now, if he didn't plan on it. Everybody, please, the 15th, June 15th, 11:00 to 5:00 p.m., at Bledsoe Park, show up, bring the whole family, family-friendly. We're going to have food trucks, food vendors, bouncy house, all kinds of things that the community, I think, will enjoy. So, thanks.
I was going to be in Alaska that day, but I think that actually may work out. I may go to the Arts Festival. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Thompson.
Karen Thompson, 11327 Hero Way West, and Chairman of the Leander Historical Preservation Here tonight to tell you about, we've been studying so much the past week, in particular, about World War II D-Day, the 75th anniversary. But I wanted to tell you about, to back up a little bit to World War I, and two Leander men that gave their life in World War I. And I want to talk about John Andrew Heinitz first. He's the one in the middle, holding his rifle. He was born here in 1895, and went into, as a private in the U.S. Army, in the 42nd Infantry Division. And if you're familiar with the 42nd, the 4th Division, I'm sorry, he went in on the 4th Division. And if you're familiar with it, that was John J. Pershing's army. And, and they went over to France, and he died there at Saint-Méhiel, I don't know the pronunciation. The 4th Infantry Army went on to the Meuse-Aragon Offensive, led by Pershing, with 600,000 troops as they entered the Argonne Forest with 600,000 troops, and they fought for 47 straight days. Next, we have, because my time is going, next, we have, oh, and the picture over here is, is the fighting at, at Meuse. Frank Champion, born here in 1895, he joined what was the U.S. National Guard that became the 42nd. And the 42nd Army Infantry was led by Pershing. They went to France, and in this company, before they got to the Argonne, they fought, and after, get there after the whole time, they fought, this division fought 264 days straight. This is World War I. The numbers for World War I are actually, if you combine them, I mean, if you look at them and compare them, are worse than, than World War II, and we know how bad that is. But that's Champion up there, that's his tombstone, he's in Baghdad Cemetery. Heinitz has a, a nice tombstone with military stuff. He's also in, in Baghdad Cemetery. And they had wonderful families here, and I hope they can be remembered for, for their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you. I was at the desk, and my lip is crooked.
Kathy?
Ow. Kathy Howell, the Pickle Mason House, and I just did a number on my finger. I don't have very much, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that helped me pull off the surprise birthday party for mother. It was, I've tried for 35 years, off and on, to have a surprise party for her, and this was the very first time that, that I accomplished it with y'all's help, and I want to say thank you. And that was it.
All right. Thank you very much. That was very interesting. Um, at this time, we're going to move to recognitions. We want to recognize tonight our interim fire chief, Kerr. Would you like to come up and say a word? But we, we want to extend our sincerest thank yous to you for everything that you've done. And, you know, it's always tough when somebody's been here and you're following somebody who's been here so long, and you've done a fantastic job. So, I want to thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you. You caught me off-guard, so, because I wasn't expecting this, but I, I do want to say that I thank y'all for your support. I'd be remiss, the staff back here have been phenomenal. I can't tell you the number of staff back here that have come to me and said, "You need help, you need something, let me know." And then, last but certainly not least, is the members of the fire department, phenomenal group. I don't, really, they make me look good. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. We've got a great staff. At this time, we're going to let them report something, though, so, Mr. Carroll.
Mayor, council, good evening. Well, this month, we continued on that high trend line. We've compared to last year, we're up about 22, if I'm counting right there, on the permits, so, simple graph to read, but we're not slowing down at all. Any questions?
That's it?
That's it. Short and sweet.
This is a man a few words right here, I want to, I want to tell you. All right. Well, awesome. All right, Mr. Watts.
That's a hard act to follow.
That's right. That can't ever be said of you, so, you know.
Well, I'm going to try to be as brief, but probably not, won't be able to be quite that brief. Right now, the engineering department has 20 sets of construction plans for public improvements under review. And of course, public improvements, that just indicates by definition, these are water, sewer, streets, drainage, wastewater, infrastructure, that are being constructed by other parties and dedicated to the city for maintenance in perpetuity. Basically, a large part of this is our subdivision process, subdivision construction process. As far as public improvements that we have under construction, there's 43 different projects currently under construction. And, of course, the engineering department's capital improvement inspectors do the inspection for that. We have five inspectors that we have to spread across typically six and a half days of work per week. And we, uh, it's a stretch at times, and we would hope to be able to do something about that in our next budget. I guess I'm lobbying here, but... And as far as the number of site development projects, this is site development plans under review. Now, this, you know, these are not public improvements, these are, you know, private developments, business, and otherwise. Some of it, you may see, even some PEC and Atmos and AT&amp;T projects even include some of their dry utility upgrades and things like that. So, there's currently 22 sets of plans under review. And as far as site developments that are under construction, there's 37 different site developments that are under construction at this time. That's the list of the site developments that are currently under construction. Now, we've also got a lot of other capital projects under construction in the city. This is a list of, of some of them, or most of them. The Baghdad Road improvements, right now, of course, all of these projects have been negatively impacted by the record 12 months of rainfall that we've had in the last, last year, basically that started in May of last year, so maybe we'll call it 13 months. Baghdad Road, right now, you know, we have the first course of asphalt down, all curb and gutter is in place, all storm sewers in place. They are working on completing all of the sidewalks on both the east side and the west side of Baghdad. We expect the project, their schedule, and I would, I would suspect and hope that we can beat this schedule, as long as the weather cooperates with us. We expect to be complete with final paving and acceptance of Baghdad by the end of July. The Brushy Street project, we, well, you see what's happening out there. Matter of fact, people are working out there as we speak, completing some of the aesthetic components of it. They're rolling, finishing rolling on a four-part, four-part component system, epoxy system, which is here at the intersection of Willis and, and Brushy Street. We expect and hope and pray to have this project open for traffic. Now, it won't be complete, because we still have streetlights to be delivered and installed. And, but, we're not going to hold off while we're waiting for that. We're going to let the public access, let them access the businesses that have all, certainly been impacted. I'm sure the, the bear market will be very happy when we can get this open for more convenient access by their customers. The East Street project is, 90% plans are complete. They are working on, they have submitted a draft, a conditional letter of map revision where, which relates to the channel improvements that we have in that project for our review, and that, that is in review as we speak. Kaufman Loop Elevated Storage Tank is, is, has been substantially completed for several months. As, as we speak, they are installing the security fencing, and the tank will go into service, hopefully no later than November, which is the completion date required for the St. Gabriel Pumping, Pump Station, which is under construction as we speak. The Metro Drive Extension, there again, another project's been delayed by rainfall and by agreement. Now, we'll say that, you know, we have a contract with Chasco. They have acquired bridge components, and they're in their yard. Chasco is expected to begin construction work in two weeks. And that's, that's as of one of their principals 15 minutes ago, so, that's current data. Right-of-way, the design is 90% complete. We are in the process of securing right-of-way and public utilities along Woodview and Right-of-Way, where we don't know how that's, possibly some, we may have some condemnation for that project. We expect that project to start construction in October. Now, that depends on any number of things, and it may depend the outcome of some condemnation hearings, and some of the scheduling issues associated with securing condemnation commissioners for a hearing. St. Gabriel Project, Parkway Project, the joint project between the developer and the city is under construction. That's all four lanes across the limits of, of Palmera Bluff and Palmera Ridge. We are at approximately 90% on the east end and the west end, which is a two-lane design, which is what was called for by the Bon Tass Forest. Brushy Creek Wastewater Treatment Plan Expansion Project, which, yeah, we will be, become a full member of Brushy Creek Regional Wastewater System, once we secure treatment capacity there. Right now, we're renting treatment capacity. Plans are, are expected to be, well, they're 90% complete now, expect to be complete early fall. Possibility of bidding this project in early '20, calendar year '20. Any questions?
Yes, um, Brushy Street, I'm sorry, did I miss it? Did you say when you think it'll be open to the public?
We, we will open it by next Friday, is my hope. I was hoping to get it open this, this week, but we had some problems with rainfall and which interferes with this aesthetic epoxy coating that we have out here at Willis Street, and at each end of the street also.
Okay. And then, when are the lights supposed to be delivered?
I am not sure. I'm not, I'm not, it's, we think it's within four weeks, as represented by the contractor. There's been, there have been, there has, has been a historic issue with delivery of steel components and so forth that was delayed, and I don't know if it's attributed to some of the, you know, some of the tariffs and so forth that were put in place, you know, eight, nine months ago, whenever it was, but I, I think we're past that issue. We also have a, there's a Time Warner, and you know, there's still one pole on the street, one, one Chris Oak Pole that's got one piece of wire on it that belongs to Time Warner that our, our engineer misidentified, and of course, they're, they're having to pay the additional cost for a remodeling to take that pole out. Time Warner has completed their work and installed their, their splicing and installed their, their cable through cable that we provided for that purpose. And I would expect that pole to be out next couple of weeks. I think we'll be substantially, have everything up, the pedestrian lighting and the street lighting, next, into July, let's put it like, I'm giving myself an extra 30 days there, so.
Great. And when the lighting comes in, is that going to necessitate the reclosure of the road, or will it stay open?
We, it'll just be temporary closures. We will not close the whole road down, because now, they'll have to have some flagging, you know, but, you know, we'd not, this road is not a highly, there's not a tremendous amount of traffic on it going from Broad Street to South Street, so I don't expect it to be a terrible inconvenience to the public and the businesses.
The parking. I just want the parking.
Staff does, too. I, I have a staff that, my, all the inspectors have to, have to park over at the Jewel Facility, so, that'll be, they will appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? Thank you, council.
Thank you, Wayne. I did want to recognize the, the newbie staff, Mr. Evan Melron. Now, usually, if somebody comes to the lectern and they just sing a few bars from their favorite song, I don't know if we want to continue that trend or not, but Evan's in Economic Development, and we're very excited, Evan, to have you onboard, so, welcome. Welcome. All right. At this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is an action item. Oh, sorry, Parks. I have an appointment at 9:00.
Thank you, thank you, mayor and council. Couple of things, very nice that Ms. Thompson gave us an eloquent display of World War I and into World War II. Thank you for that. And it's really just fitting that, as a tribute to the more than 4,400 who allied forces that gave their lives for our freedom 75 years ago today, on this day, 2,500, actually 2,499 were Americans. I believe it's fitting to let you know that we have begun Phase III of Veterans Park, which is really nice. We'll be glad, we'll have that open and completed before our Veterans Day celebration in November, so we're looking forward to a very, very nice time in November to open not only that Phase III, but to honor our veterans of Leander and our surrounding region and state. Couple of things, as you can see on the, on the board, a lot of, a lot of great events coming up. Of course, our swim lessons, our aquatics program is exploding. Go by the pool almost any day, you're going to see lots of families, lots of kids, and of course, we've done tremendous amount of swim lessons already, and that, those continue throughout the, throughout the next, this coming month. Some of our summer camps, Sports Mania this week has been full. Our youth lacrosse camp is coming up, along with youth baseball camp, Camp Curiosity, Camp Curiosity Art Camp, Sports Mania Number Two, STEM Lego Camp, and STEM Challenge Lego Camps, those are always great, and those are early July. So, we have a couple of spots in each one of those, that's about it, and they're, they're full. And then, some other events that you may be interested in, the, our active adults are going to a whiskey distillery. I'm not sure what their choice of adult beverage is, but they've, gave us feedback that they would like to go to, to this place, so that's where they're heading. And then, as Scott also very nicely stated earlier, the Leander Art Festival on June 15th, we're looking forward to that. And I think everybody received a, a copy of a poster. You're welcome to have more. I've got a few more with me, if you'd like. Performance in the Park is also that afternoon, evening. We had a great time last month. Lots of people came out, great number of cars, probably well over 110, 115 vehicles. And then, on the, our active adults, again, later in this month are going to the Oomah Sculpture Garden, and they're actually going to be kayaking, too, so, which is really, really cool. And then, last but not least, Liberty Fest. I've shared a little bit more about that recently, and of course, we're grateful that Mike Ryan, Jason Boland are going to be with us, and then, one of the largest fireworks show in central Texas will go off at 9:25, and I wanted to share with you that we're excited that you, city council, will be there as well, and we'll have a complete packet of information. I mean, you're going to get a nice packet next council meeting. It'll have all the schedules, your badges, and parking instructions, everything you need to know about how to Liberty Fest on July 4th. So, we're looking forward to a great day, and look forward to seeing you all there.
Any estimates to how many people are going to be there?
15,000. How about that?
Wow.
So, you know, we've got room for that, so we'll see. We'll see. Pretty close to that, if everything falls into place.
Mr. Thompson, can you tell me more about the performance in the park? I've, I don't think I've heard about that.
This was a, an, an activity that was completed by our chamber in years past, which is right out, outside here, on the other side of the city hall. So, there's music, there's vendors, we have a car show coming back in that same night. So, we had a great band last month. I don't know who the band is, but I'll be glad to find out for you, but whoever it is, they're, they're going to be excellent, so, yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Now, we're going to move to our consent agenda.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to, excuse me?
This is not for minutes. It's five minutes, right? No. Minutes from the last couple, two of it, the dates, is that important? It says Thursday, and it was a, a Wednesday and a Monday.
We can make those corrections, and just say, if you'll please, just make your motion as amended with the correction to the minutes. And if you agree to that, Ms. Councilmember Sutter Quest, do you agree to that?
I agree.
Yeah. So, you got to amend your motion.
Do I go ahead and redo the motion?
No, as long as you agree.
I agree.
And the second is okay.
And the second agrees as well. Good catch.
All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. This is unanimously. All right. We're going to move to our regular agenda at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Cernic will be recusing himself. Right. Number 19, discussing, consider action on an ordinance to amend Section 3.03.032 Building Code amendments regarding guardrail requirements associated with walls and to amend Section 3.01.015D regarding authority for the building official to assess penalty fees for occupancy violations and to provide for related matters, Leander Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Linda, I believe you're going to come up. Is this the first?
It is.
Wow.
Hopefully, the last.
But we'll make sure it's not.
Linda Alger, Building Official. We are just trying to align the languages for the ordinances, as far as the fall protection goes, which is the first one, 3.03.032. We have guardrail requirements already in place. We're trying to amend the ordinance to match the building code on that one. We don't require any permits for any retaining walls that are less than four feet, so we're going to raise the requirement for the fall protection to match what the building code requires for permitting, so we don't have to make a trip out on a three-foot retaining wall to see if they put up a guardrail. So, and that's for fall protection. Also adds language to include other fall issues besides just a retaining wall, such as an elevated driveway, which could also be considered to be a hazardous environment for, for the property. So, we're there to protect the property owners.
Awesome.
Any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
I don't think so.
Okay. On the second part, when it comes to the... On the second part, when it comes to the penalties?
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't addressed that one yet.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But we'll get to that if you'd like to.
Go ahead. Go on with your time.
All right. So the second one regarding the penalties for the authority for the building official to assess the penalty fees for occupancy violations, pretty much in the same manner right now, it speaks for the city manager to determine whether or not there's a violation. The building code already tasks me with that requirement. That's part of my job. It's my job to make sure that when a property owner moves into their home, they have a CO on that property when they move in. Everything's done, everything's been inspected and approved by the city as required by law. So we are taking the, basically trying not to duplicate my efforts by putting the burden as well on the city manager. So what we've done is just replace the language of city manager with the building official to, again, align ourselves with what's already in the building code. So to me, it's a duplication of effort.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Okay. My concern lies where we're removing conducting a hearing, just giving notice, and then it immediately seems like the clock starts. I don't see any timeframes in here, which makes me a little concerned. So the building official shall give notice to the person of the violation and shall give notice of the administrative penalty due that is established by the section, and the person may request a hearing regarding the determination with the judge. So we're immediately going to judge, but I don't know what the timeframe is, and I don't...
Yeah, actually, they're, it's just like paying a ticket. You can go in there and you can pay the fine, you don't have to go see the judge, it's over. What the, and we haven't changed that section of the ordinance. That was still part of the original ordinance language, except for, of course, removing the hearing. We have, the hearing was being held by the city manager. So at that, at that time, I would notify the city manager that we had a home in violation, and they would have the opportunity to come in and have a hearing with Kent and, or the city manager, whoever that may be, and state, state their case, basically, if they chose to have a hearing. Typically, the builders use this as a method of convenience. They will move the occupants into a home, knowing that these penalties will be assessed, but to them, it's cheaper than having to pay for a hotel for the family or, and storage for the people's things while they finish the work. So $100 a day for an entire family to move into their home without a CO is cheaper than paying for a storage facility for their belongings and to put the family up at a hotel until they get their, get the home finished.
But who would be cited? The homeowner or the builder?
No. It's up to the builder. The builder's responsible for that property up to the point the CO is issued, as far as the building codes concerned. So there's still, and that's what I'm trying not to do, is I'm trying not to penalize the homeowners. The responsibility stays with the builder, even though the homeowners are already in the home. It's not their fault.
Right. And so notice, again, I still don't understand the timeframe, so...
We notify them immediately upon us finding out that they have moved somebody in. So we notify them, hey, you got somebody living in your house, why are they there? There'd be a really compelling reason. Usually, again, it's the convenience. They didn't get it done on Friday afternoon, the house closed, people moved in on the weekend, they just opted to go ahead and pay the penalty fees, let them move in, finish the home on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, or however long it takes them to do that. That's probably about 95% of the violations. We have a few ongoing, which is one of the reasons why we've changed this language, that are accruing fees as of today, that get up into the tens of thousands of dollars. So that's the issue we're trying to, trying to stop, basically.
And so you come in and write a citation, I guess, that there's someone living...
No, we just give them a note, we give them a notice, usually via a letter through the email, and so we have something in writing that states, you know...
Are we giving them an email or a certified letter?
Typically, to start with, it's a certified letter to notify them, and then they come in and they contact me, and we have that conversation, what's going on. Because this isn't just a, hey, this is a flat, you're in violation, and this is a problem, we're going to charge you the fees. It's based on whatever the extenuating circumstances are. A lot of times, it's new people in their field, they've hired a new individual, he dropped the ball, let this happen, we'll never, we'll let it happen again. Okay? Slap your hand, don't let it happen again, no fees are assessed. Happens again, then there's going to be a, then there's going to be a problem.
But currently, per this ordinance, you would send the certified letter, and every day after it's postmarked is $100 until, so they may not even know about it, and they're being assessed fees?
We typically, like I said, we notify them in person immediately when we find out, and then we follow through with whatever the protocol is for, for formal notification, if it's going to go to a process where we are going to charge them fees.
Okay, but is that in the actual ordinance? Or is this ordinance giving you authority to start racking it up from, from day one without really a hearing, and it goes straight to court?
It doesn't go straight to court. Well, I guess the court is being used as an appeals process, but Paige can assist me with this because she assisted writing the legal part of that.
Yeah, and I think she explained it, the analogy is a ticket, so the ordinance establishes a penalty of $100 per day, just like state law or an ordinance will establish the penalty for violation of one of your ordinances that goes through municipal court. So the enforcement entity, which would be code enforcement or police department or building official in this case, gives a notice of violation and advises you're in violation, and there's a penalty of $100 a day, you're at this penalty at this point. At that point, the person can decide to come in and pay the penalty, because that's always an option when you get a ticket. I can just come pay the ticket and go on my way, or you can request a hearing in front of the hearings officer, which the hearings officer in this case is the municipal court judge. So it's similar to that. So it, what I'm hearing is there's an initial reach out of come into compliance if that is not, if that's not adhered to, if the person doesn't come into compliance, then the next step is enforcement, where they get a notice of you're in violation, you've been told there's a, there's a $100 a day penalty for this. At this point, you have a penalty of this much established, you have the right to request a hearing on this matter, and you must request that hearing within a certain number of days. That would be specified in the notice letter. If there's a desire to specify, you know, what timeframe they need to have to request the hearing in the ordinance, we can, we can do so as well if there's some concerns there, but that would be the, the process, is to give notice of the ability to request a hearing and the timeframe for doing so. And then if they don't do that, then it's just one of those things that kind of continues unless someone comes and takes care of business.
Okay. Does this only apply to residential COs or also commercial?
It can apply to either, but the issues that we have typically are residential. We have yet to have a commercial entity, because there's so many other components of it as well, occupy without a CO that we're aware of.
That's one of my concerns of unintended consequences of adding in a very, very strict ordinance, where we can go, start assessing immediately, and their choices to pay it or go to court, because with commercial COs, there's a lot of extenuating circumstances.
Right. But the penalties would apply if the situation were to occur that they occupied without a CO. It is not, doesn't stipulate, it says in both the Building Code and the Residential Code, which are two separate codes, have basically identical language stating that the building official must make sure that everything is done, and a certificate of occupancy must be obtained prior to occupying. So it's in both sections of the building codes, residential and commercial. The issues we're having are not, we don't have too many issues with the commercial, but the residential builders are, as you know, are getting busier and busier, and they just, some of them just aren't, aren't really getting it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick. So I'm happy with the fact we're raising it. What I'm uneasy about is still that statement says a temporary guardrail may be required.
Oh, okay, yeah.
When, when is that may be? Who's going to make that determination?
That would be determined basically by either the building inspector out in the field or myself, and that's going to be on a case-by-case basis, based on the terrain and the situation that the builder has created out there. Not all of them require it, but some of them may put themselves in a pretty hazardous situation, even if it's temporary, that can create some problems. And like I said, the, the OSHA requires the building inspectors to basically point out, we don't write tickets or whatever, but they, they reach out to us and say, we need you guys to help us enforce the OSHA regulations. We see roofers on the roof on two, three-story buildings not tied off. We'll let superintendent know. And that's pretty much what we do. We let the superintendent or the project manager know, hey, there's a condition out here we're concerned about, we need to, need to take care of it, it's a safety problem. So, and most of the builders are pretty amenable to that, because nobody wants on the job injuries.
Sure, sure.
And the temporary just basically is for projects under construction.
Yeah. And then it's the second part of that, too, like I stated, that the material that is going to be required to be used for that. So I'm just a little uneasy that that language is not in there, but I get the OSHA portion of it, yeah. Does that uphold your can of worms?
Any other questions?
This is an action item. Don't everybody talk at once? All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? All in favor? Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to move to item 20, Discuss and Consider Action on the Second Reading of an Ordinance Granting to the Pertenalis Electric Cooperative Incorporated Its Legal Representatives, Successors, Lesses, and Assign Certain Powers, Licenses, Rights of Way, Privileges, and Franchise to Construct, Maintain, Operate, and Use a Transmission and Distribution System in the City of Leander to Provide Electric Utility Service and Providing a Process for Resolving Violations of the Ordinance. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the second reading of this proposed franchise ordinance. If you, you will recall, back in May, we held a public hearing, and then subsequent meeting was the first reading of the, of the proposed franchise ordinance. Just to kind of recap how we got here, the existing franchise agreement with Pertenalis Electric was a 20-year agreement. It expired in, in 2018. Prior to that date, we started discussions, conversations, and negotiations with PEC representatives to update, revise the terms. We have finally come to agreement on all the things that we, we discussed over that, over that time. But kind of, again, recapping the highlights, the franchise fee that the company pays to the City of Leander would go from 2% of gross revenues to 4%. That's more in line with our neighboring cities and other utilities that you might see throughout the state. That change was not the reason these negotiations took over 12 to 18 months. It was all the other things that are in the ordinance regarding work in the right-of-way, which we're very concerned about how those activities are performed as, as they are too. We had new issues since 1998 with the first agreement. We now have the TOD with the different design makeup, so that presented them with some issues that they wanted addressed, as well as we wanted to address. So we had to create a different model to address some of those issues in, in the TOD. And the term is a seven-year term with two five-year renewals. So this gives us the flexibility, the opportunity, as things change in, in the world, to revisit this in seven years. If we're all happy, and they're happy, we can, you know, request that you renew it another five years. And so 20 years is a long time, as we learned from 1998 to 2018. At the last meeting, I, you may recall, I mentioned that we had some changes from the draft that was presented at the public hearing, basically to tighten down language regarding permitting and charges that they would be exempt from because they're paying a franchise fee. We have attempted to narrow that down, so it's not wide open that they get a free, a free pass on any permitting work in the City of Leander. So that is in section 9.6 and 9.7. They came back after that first draft and asked to clarify it on their end. So we're still in agreement on what the intent is, but both sides were, were wordsmithing the language on what, what fees they would be exempted from in the future. So they didn't want to, they didn't want to be double-dipped, but we didn't want to have an unintended consequence, to use the phrase, and have something that they would build in the future that would, that should be subject to permitting fees be, be left unfeed, so to speak. So, long overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Where the revenue goes? Does it go to general fund or utility?
This is a general fund revenue. All franchise, right-of-way franchise fees are general fund revenues.
Okay, thank you. And then you said this is in line with other cities around us?
Yes.
Okay.
With one exception, the City of Cedar Park, but they are, too, are under a 20-year agreement that is expiring this year.
And that was the term of our last one as well, right? 20 years?
Our, our last one was 20 years, yes. So their, their current fee is comparable to, it's a different formula, based on kilowatt-hours, but it's comparable to 2%. Not sure where they will be going in their negotiations, but they have been interested in where we are going.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
I have a question. Sorry, Jason, you're going to have to move quicker. I'm still a little concerned about the TOD and the taxpayers having to fund relocation. To me, it seems like we ought to be designing correctly the first way, first time around, so that the taxpayers don't have to pay to relocate specifically in the TOD because of the smart code. Can you tell me a circumstances, a circumstance in which we would have to relocate the lines and pay for, pay for that?
I can, I can describe the intent, and it's going to take perhaps Mr. Watts to envision the circumstance that that may create. But, so in the, only in certain areas of the TOD, not all of them, but in what's defined as the urban districts, the buildings are potentially right up against the right-of-way, which means to serve those buildings, PEC would have to locate within the right-of-way because they, they wouldn't have the space to obtain private utility easements, which is their preferred method, because they do not want to have to relocate.
Right.
So our TOD development would constrict them into the public right-of-way, which they resisted, and so the negotiation was that... And so, the, the negotiation was that, okay, if we force you to go in here because you have no other opportunities to go elsewhere to serve that property, then if the circumstance would arise that we need to have you move, then we'll, we will pay that relocation. Similar to, and I feel Mr. Watts right next to me, so I feel that he could answer this better. Why don't you just?
Well, basically, I mean, that is indeed the, you know, the conditions that are, are necessary for PEC to feel secure in this. But, what that, if we had to relocate, that means we're relocating streets typically. Are we relocating some type of major infrastructure, drainage, or something like that? Once streets and so forth have been constructed, you know, that, those changes only occur due to development or redevelopment, and the city would require the developer to bear the cost.
That was, okay. And so, along the same lines then, the internet fiber, the phone lines, all of this is going to have to be run in the right-of-way versus the public?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's by design in the smart code?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because there's zero setback with building setbacks.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So, the argument is to raise that franchise fee, that everybody else is doing it, correct?
I wouldn't say it that way, no, sir.
Okay, well, everybody in the area is doing it, so we're going to do it too. We're just going to keep pace with everybody else. And this is not against you, so don't, please don't.
No.
Right? Okay, so, I'm against that, whether, look, $6 is what the average increase is going to be. And that's, to most of us, that's nothing. But, to somebody, that may mean a whole bunch, especially if they raise the rates. You had the $6 and a $20, and you got $26 increase. And I just don't, I just don't see why we should raise the franchise fee. We should just keep it where it's at, so.
So, we talked a little bit earlier, Mr. Powers, so thank you for clearing up a few things and making sure I understood it. So, I don't know that it's, that we've talked about it here, but my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that our, our previous budget before us was approved with the anticipation of this increase. So, if we did not vote to approve this increase, how would that affect us?
Thank you. So, to kind of dovetail on your, your question and back up a little bit, when we, when we opened discussions with PEC and told them about some of the, the things that we were interested in, in a new franchise, one of them was updating the fee from 2% to 4%, as well as these other issues that, that we're talking about in the TOD and elsewhere. From day one, they, they did not express any concern about the going from 2% to 4%, I'm assuming, because they pass it on to the customer, so. But it took us a year to, to work out these other, more technical and difficult issues on both sides. So, last summer, when we were at the city council retreat, part of the retreat discusses the budget. And there were, as, as always, there are things that we can, that city managers' recommended budget can fund with existing revenues. And there are other things that, what we call below the line, that aren't, that have been requested by departments but not funded. And we were also talking about the PEC negotiations and where those stood. We felt at the time, we, city staff, felt at the time that we were within two to three months of having this all taken care of by the end of maybe November or December of 2018, which would have meant that the fees would have kicked in, in roughly January. So, with that information, the city council felt comfortable us increasing the, the revenue. We increased it a little over $600,000, which was the estimate of the, of the impact. So, that's how we got to, that's how we got it in the, in the budget. We typically don't budget anything that's hoped for, but in this case, we felt pretty certain. Lesson learned. Fortunately, we've had other revenues in the general fund, primarily development fees and sales tax and property tax that have more than made up the, the lost $600,000 that we were expecting from PEC. So, some of you, you that have heard me before kind of know that's why we are trying, try to be conservative on our revenues because you never know when you're going to strike out on something or, or miss, miss a development. So, we're okay this budget year with the lost revenue. In fact, approving this tonight, PEC still has to go through their process with notifying their customers and their rates. So, we won't collect this fiscal year. The impact will be next budget, the one that starts October 1. So, it would essentially, the estimate is now about $700,000. So, it's a, it would be an impact of potentially lost revenue of $700,000 next budget year. I hope that wasn't too long an answer. Thank you.
No, so, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I also think it's important to remember that during the discussions, you know, part of it was that we were actually going to give it back to property owners through tax relief. And we were the only city that I know of in the Austin area that hit the effective rate. So, we actually had a tax decrease. So, I mean, I look at it that, I mean, we didn't take it and find something to go spend it on. I mean, it was really geared towards property tax relief, which, you know, you can say that we end up painting it in a different, a different area. But I think if you think about it, it, it applies more to property owners that you're given the relief to. Does that make any sense?
So, that, that tax relief being, meaning lowering the property tax has already taken place?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, so for anyone that, if we do it again, then it's just, we're not raising this to lower it in the future. It's already been lowered in the past.
Yeah, and I mean, that, you know, to me, my opinion during the negotiations was this was, this was an effective way. And I mean, you know, we can look at what the legislature's talking about, is how do we provide property owners tax relief, right? So, it was a way that we could provide property owners through another, another revenue stream, as it were, that might hit everybody that would normally be hit through property taxes.
And this, this also affects all apartment owner, I'm not owners, but apartments themselves, correct?
Yes, it, it would affect anyone that has an electric bill.
Okay.
Right.
So, I know we're taxpayers up here and, and nobody wants to raise anything. I mean, that's, I, especially retirement income, I mean, that's us. We live on our retirement income. And adding $2 or $4 to anything, you know, it, it's, it's something. But, I have to look at 20 years, everything has increased over 20 years. The value of that right-of-way has increased dramatically over 20 years. From, I mean, that, to me, it's, it just seems like a very small, I mean, it doubles, yes. But, like we see, as, on $100, it doubles from $2 to $4. And if that changes somebody's life, you know, it, it could, it could. Hopefully, we, we will be able to make that up in, in other ways. It just seems like we're catching up. And I do, I did look at this and, and see some of the surrounding cities, and I noticed that Kyle is actually 4.5%. So, they're, they're higher than, than we're proposing changing to.
All right, this is an action item.
And one other comment, just to make it clear, the doubling is not electric bill. It's just, it's a fee. Just got to say that.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Okay. Motion to approve with the changes as provided.
I will second. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes five to two. Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. All right, this time, we're going to move to item 21, discuss and consider action on change order number two, construction contract for San Gabriel Parkway, Phase One Street Drainage and Utility Improvements, increasing contract time by 94 days and the contract cost by $209,525, which will be reimbursed by the design engineer, Fries and Nichols, and authorizing the acting city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Watts?
Well, council, this is a pretty unique situation. And it's, this is a mistake, an error, an unforced error, but, well, well, I won't call it an unforced error, it's just an unknown error. Who would, who would ever know that there's a difference between international feet and US feet? But there is a difference, and that difference is one foot in every 500,000. Actually, an international foot is slightly smaller than a US foot. International foot is .3048 meters. A US foot, US survey foot, which was adopted about 17 years prior to the international foot, is .3048006096 meters. And that, that works out to two parts per million. So, in a million feet, there's two, you know, there's, a million US survey feet would be two feet larger than a million international feet. And this, this mistake is a survey mistake and a layout mistake based on that very era and based on a setting in a civil 3D pro, design program. And I think it was an education to a lot of folks. Very few people ever aware that, that this existed. Now, I will say, this, this error is being fully reimbursed, you know, by the design engineer. They took note, they did not hesitate, take responsibility, and I admire them for that. We have a representative from Fries and Nichols here, Mr. Juan Sierra. Upon your approval, we will have a check tomorrow. Now, I might note that what this, you know, this, we are a partner in this effort with Palmer Ridge Development. Palmer Ridge Development is the contracting authority, so this will be a pass-through to them. But we, because we are a partner and a funder of this roadway construction, and which, by the way, just so folks know, it's Phase One, it's only the red part in the middle there on the map. That's the part, that's the four-lane part that's under construction now. Might also note, you know, there's a 24-inch waterline associated with this project. It's off also, but it's going to stay where it is. We're making some modifications to allow about three and a half feet of encroachment into a 10-foot landscape easement with our waterline so that we don't have to jerk it up and relay it at considerable cost. And I would request your approval.
I just have one quick question out of curiosity. How did we end up with a measurement that was in, I know you mentioned software. Was it like somebody had a box checked, or?
It's, it's a preference box in the, in the software, yes. Yeah, it's, I think is a learning, learning experience for quite a few folks.
Right, okay, thank you.
On the timeline sheet that you gave us, is that just for Phase One?
Yes, ma'am. Not, oh, timeline?
The?
When the staff report?
No, the timeline on the agenda.
Oh, the 94 days?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, just for Phase One. Phase, Phase 2A and 2B are nearing completion of design. We still have acquisitions of right-of-way to go through on that also.
Okay, so I guess my question is, Phase One goes really from nowhere to nowhere, but it was built first?
Well, it was built first because there was an agreement to do that, a development agreement, oh, gosh, which is probably about three years old. It's, it's a very complicated development agreement, which I would not, well, didn't really have a hand in and wouldn't recommend again. But, it, we, we could have performed this project in a, a more simple fashion. It is what it is. We're playing the cards we're dealt.
And so, do we have any idea when 2A and 2B are expected to be done, which would connect this road to somewhere?
Those will be things that we will be discussing with council in the coming months. I would say that we would be prepared to go to construction late fall, early winter.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This is an action item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. I'm a center course with a second by Ms. Cannon. All in favor? This is unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. All right, number 22, discuss and consider appointment of a council member to the Capital Area Council of Governments, CapCog, General Assembly. So, we need to have a volunteer, someone who would like to serve on this assembly. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about it. They meet twice a year, the General Assembly, is that correct?
On the spot a little, but yeah, we meet twice a year for General Assembly.
Okay.
And there's really not a whole lot to it for General Assembly. You show up and they give you an agenda. They talk about the programs that they're doing and you raise your hand and vote. Kind of like here, like for one thing. That's my experience in the two meetings that I've been to. So, not the best authority.
I'm happy to volunteer for that.
Okay, all right.
Unless someone else wants it.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Marcy Cannon. All right, all in favor?
I didn't vote for myself, no.
This is unanimously. Do you know something we don't know?
No, I didn't know if I could.
All right, we move to item 23, discuss and consider action on moving the start time for regular city council meetings to 7:00 PM, with the briefing session to be held at 6:00 PM before each regular meeting and workshops. When applicable, to meet at 5:00 PM prior to the regular meeting. So, we've talked at different times about a packet meeting, about, you know, really ways to, to be more efficient and have, you know, it hasn't been a concern so far at the last couple of meetings, and it looks like it won't be tonight. But, you know, just so we're not here till 1:00 PM in the morning. So, the idea was to look at best practices from other cities. And what we talked about was a packet meeting. So, what it would look like was that the agenda would be sent out. Everybody would know, you know, pretty much what is going to be on the agenda, what questions to ask. People could reach out to, we need to clarify if that's through you or to a director directly? Which is it?
Both, we're, we're a team.
Okay.
We're, we're a team here.
So, we could reach out to a director, a department director, if we had a question about something. Those questions could also be asked in a posted meeting. So, this would be a public meeting. This is not an attempt to, you know, go around the, the public access. So, you know, it would be a posted meeting where discussion about items on the agenda would take place with staff all in one room. The advantage of this over what we've done in the past is the amount of time that it took from a city manager who is very busy to begin with, to meet with the, each individual council member is astronomical, especially because some of us like to talk, me too. And so, you know, we could be looking at 20-plus hours a month, just meeting with council people for agenda items. So, you know, and nobody got time for that. So, let's just, you know, let's just steer it in a different direction and make it more streamlined. We get our questions answered in the packet meeting before a council meeting. If there is an item that someone needs clarification on, it gives the director time between the packet meeting and the council meeting to clarify the question and hopefully get an answer so that by the time the agenda item is done, the question is answered.
Okay, so I have some questions. So, when does the director have time to get those answers before our meeting?
Well, if you, if you get the posted agenda on Thursday afternoon?
Friday.
Friday, okay. So, you have until the next council meeting, till the next Thursday?
I thought you were saying after the packet meeting, they have time.
No, 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 no. If there was, let's say during the course of a conversation, something came up that nobody had asked before. So, then they would have that amount of time to clarify something, you know. But you've had- But you've had all week, so.
So, what would be different than what we're doing now, where we just call the directors during the week to get those questions answered?
Well, you can do that, but the idea is that, uh, that you would not have a meeting with the city manager to go over the agenda. You would go over the agenda like everybody else would at the meeting.
I guess what I'm not understanding is why we would have a meeting of all of us directly before a meeting of all of us, to talk about the exact same things, but not vote on them, but have the time constraint of one hour to get it done?
Well, you've had all week, so.
So, I don't understand the purpose of meeting directly before our meeting to have a meeting about our meeting. Like, it just seems like really weird timing if we're going to do this. I think that there needs to be, you know, at a minimum, several hours, if not a day or two between, to get questions answered that come up.
And I think that makes it hard on everybody to, to figure out a time that works with people's schedules. It, it's almost impossible.
I think this is complicated, and I don't think it's going to serve the purpose you're wanting it to serve.
I think it works in other cities, but I don't see why.
Who does their packet meeting right before?
You were telling me, what was it, Duncanville did it?
Yes, this is a common practice, but it also allows everybody to sit around the table and hear the questions and the answers all at the same time instead of getting staff getting half a dozen of questions and everything. And sometimes a person's question might spur some other discussion from there. And what it is, is it's meant to, everybody come together and ask questions, and it's help, helpful to get that done in advance to make your meetings more streamlined. If they are public meetings for public to attend, there are minutes for those discussions. They're done in the same manner as workshops or retreats with discussions held and all of that. So, they are done in the same manner. They're typically not recorded. They're held around a table in a discussion setting, like in the San Gabriel Room. Everybody knows the routine. People that are interested in those discussions come in. If you have a citizen ask you a question, you're able to ans, provide that question during that meeting. Typically, most questions are provided to staff in advance to research and provide proper things rather than trying to come up on the dais, being thrown questions and having to speak from the hip. It gives them time to research and provide thorough responses.
And I mean, if we've done our, if, if we've done things the right way during the week, which is ask the question, let somebody gather the information, then it could be that, you know, we get here and, and, and we just go right through it. But the main thing to me is freeing up the city manager to do their job and not requiring them to have to spend so much time every month, you know, taking away from their official duties to meet with each one of us to go through the agenda. So, to me, it's a no-brainer.
And they are not just, I'm sorry, not just the city manager, but all the department heads.
Right.
Through the meeting with the city manager, having to answer the same questions. And then, the concerns of two of y'all heard one thing, two of us didn't hear that information, and it just causes problems. So, I think being able to sit around and ask questions in an open dialogue, a less formal manner.
Yeah, it has not been efficient, what we've been doing the last three years. And I mean, it's just a, you know, it's a travesty that you occupy that much time of a city manager who is a very high-paid, you know, person anyway by just going through things that could be solved by something like this, so.
And typically, typically, you're able to complete this in an hour because not every single item on an agenda requires additional conversations and questions about it.
Fair enough, but we are a chatty bunch, and we've got this executive session tonight that's only three items, and we couldn't get it done in an hour.
That's, uh, I, that's apples and oranges to me. I think that's, that's talking about a city manager. I mean, I think that's entirely different. But, you know, it, to me, this is a very effective, um, ve, very effective way to do it. And Matt, is this something that you want to shed any light on? If I can call you up?
I feel like putting you on the spot.
Oh, no, not at all. I was, I was expecting this for the last seven or eight seconds, so. Good evening, Mayor and counsel, Matt Powell, Powell Municipal. Again, it's not generally our practice to advise you on what our specific recommendation is. It has been our finding that your current system has used in a very unusual amount of time for your city manager and staff. There's, there's really two issues with that. One is how much time is it taking? And second, how is it contributing both to inter-council relations and council staff relations? It, it has been our finding that your current practice has not only been inefficient from a time standpoint, but it has occasionally caused divisions among council members because sometimes there are perceptions of, well, then they said this, and it, it causes this he said, he said, she said, she said thing that is generally avoided when it's done in, in the same setting. As to whether this is the best way forward, I will leave that to your, to your counsel to decide. But it would be our recommendation that you find some new path forward. I, I suppose, just off the cuff, I would recommend, if you want to try what, what has been suggested tonight, do it for two or three meetings, see how it goes. Remember, you're the city council, and you can change it anytime you want to. So, you know, whether it's a packet meeting or some other process, we do think that you need to change it to something. And, and to, to speak to what Dor was saying, every city does it a little bit differently, but having packet meetings is not an uncommon practice. I, I don't know exactly which cities do it, but we've looked at a lot of cities, and it, and it is a, it is, and it is usually held day-of. But I think to what you were saying before, Mayor, it's incumbent on every council member to come up with their questions beforehand as much as possible.
So, in your findings, it's usually held day-of. Is it usually held directly before the meeting, or is there some time that elapses?
It's usually, it's, it's usually held, I, I will, while I will agree with you that, you know, if you've got things that have a, you know, a long tail on them, doing it immediately before the meeting can be challenging. I think the, the reason that most cities do hold it immediately before a meeting is, again, all of you are busy people. You're, you're uncompensated for your role here, and it's usually more a matter of people who work during the day. I know, I know, I'm still waiting for my paychecks from back in the day, too. But, uh, it, it's more a matter of logistically getting seven people who are busy in their lives and in their work and in their families there at the same time. And usually, the practice is whatever night you have shrined off for your council meeting, in your case, Thursdays, that's, that, it, logistically, it does make it easier. And the other thing that I would suggest is, again, if there's, if there's an item that has pressing questions in the packet meeting that is unresolvable, it's probably an item that will end up being discussed in the council meeting and then postponed. Because if you can't get your questions answered there and at the meeting, you know, unless it's something super time-sensitive, you can always push it back another two weeks. So, I, I, I urge all of you to remember, don't put too much pressure on yourselves. You gather as much information as you can. You rely on your staff to provide you as much information as you can. You're giving yourself an additional opportunity, besides during the week, to call and ask questions. And, and, you know, but you're, you're giving yourself ample opportunities to educate yourselves. But again, if you can't come to that decision, you can always push it back until you feel that you can make that proper decision. Give, give yourselves a little bit of slack.
So, counsel, to me, I feel like this doesn't change anything about what I'm currently doing. I'm going to get my agenda packet on Friday, I'm going to send in my questions, make my phone calls. And when I send in a question, you know, everybody gets the answer to whatever question each of us is asking. So, to me, I look at this as I'm just going to come in and waste the first hour of being here. Personally, that's my opinion.
I don't know that we get copies of your questions.
Yes, when we send questions into the city manager in email, the answer is given to everybody. There haven't been a lot of questions lately because these have been pretty light. But when there's an issue, we're all notified. And, and personally, I want that. I don't want to find out anything right before. Because when there's an issue, like with a zoning, where we're having all these complaints and all these people coming in, I want to find out the answers from staff and be able to go back to the people that are emailing in with their complaints and see if I can resolve something first, you know, and say, well, what about this? You know, and have that time to work it out. If I'm hearing it right before, then there's no time for that. So, like I said, I feel like it's just going to be an hour of just sitting here for no purpose and getting no work done because we can't vote on the things.
I agree with, with some of that as well. I feel like this was, this was something that was, in a staff meeting, was, was brought up, and it was a suggestion of somebody on staff, too, because it gave us a, a group environment to, um, to be able to discuss something. And it also gives the opportunity to, if there was something that, that was going to take three hours in a city council meeting, give it opportunity to pull it from the agenda even prior if it needed to happen. Again, I'm going in and asking the same kind of questions as well. And I think that most of our stuff would be there, but I think that, um, I would like to, as a new city council member, I would like to know if there was, if there was something, we can't always talk, and we can't always communicate that way. And that's one of my, 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 my concerns, was you may have a really good question that I can benefit from knowing.
Mayor, in person?
And in the, in a group environment like that, when we're all together, I'm willing to sacrifice a little bit of extra time for that because I think that would help me to make better decisions, too. And it would also, I, I feel like it was a good way for us to work together with council and with staff and to not have any miscommunications about, maybe the way that y'all had done it before, so.
See, and I'm fine with that, and I understand the impetus of it, and I agree that it was taking too much time from the city manager. What I don't like is the, this is directly before our meeting. Yeah, the timing is just, and I understand other cities do it, I can't wrap my brain around it.
One of, one of the things I had suggested was earlier in the week, but during the day, because staff is already staying late several.
I mean, I, I can tell you, I can't do it. I, I don't have enough time to do what I'm doing now. There's no way.
I agree, we're all.
There's no way.
So, so would it be worthwhile to, uh, Matt, thanks for your, for your comments. Would it be wi, would it be wise to, this was something that was receptive by everybody that I saw in a room, and everybody thought this would be a good idea. It would, it would, it would give us a chance to kind of do things together. This is something that we could do for a short period of time because we know right now we could do it right then. And if it was something that was redundant, if it was something that wasn't, that nobody was benefiting from, city staff is not benefiting from this, city council is not benefiting from this, could we always just, I mean, put it up on a future agenda and say, hey, like, let's propose a different time?
I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand why, if there's something that's going to take longer, that you can't work that out, if you, as a council member, think that you need more information. He's just said you can go to the director directly, or you can go to him.
Right, and that's what I already do in my preparation for the meetings. But now I have to sit here for an extra hour when we could just have it on.
And don't show up, and then six of us are going to be here.
And when do we workshop?
You have to make that decision.
When do we have workshops?
Excuse me?
When are the workshops going to be? They're going to be before this?
Absolutely, before the council meetings. So, you know, I mean, that's a decision you have to make. But if you don't feel that it's useful, then you don't have to come. But, you know, just be knowledgeable and, and ready to go for a council meeting.
And I hope that you do come officially, too, because, I mean, I think that all of us being together is important on this.
I think everyone benefits from, from those questions at the same time, too. And, and I, I will say from personal experience, we have so much going on in between. If we find out something one week and then we're looking at it the next week, I, I need a, I need a refresher course. So, having it fresh on my mind is, I think, would be very beneficial.
I understand that, but I think if you're waiting until an hour before the meeting to ask your questions, you're not doing your job.
No, I, I agree. And that's where, if, if something is in-depth, where, like today, I met with Mr. Powers because I, I needed some details, and I didn't want to wait till, till tonight. So, I could completely understand my thoughts. So, I think having that option of, let's try this for a while. If it, we no longer need it, we can change it and benefit from each other's questions at the same time. And do it quickly in an hour.
And hopefully, hopefully, we zip, hopefully, we've done those, and we've gotten the answers so that then we are just zipping through it and it, you know? But we all get the benefit of hearing the ans, the question that you asked, and you asked, and the answer that was given to you and to you, and, you know?
Plus, if we've, if we've done extra homework, we can share that at that time. Rather than five people meet with one person, we can, you know, I'll meet with them and find out, and then we can share, and it's not a.
But at that point, what's the difference from just sharing that in the meeting? This doesn't shorten our meetings.
Well, hopefully, it will.
How? We're starting an hour later.
I think, I think the benefit, the benefit would be to city staff, let's say, say. Like, I've been, I've been watching meetings even during our campaign and everything, too. And the, and the issue was, you know, giving some of those answers in an environment where we're sitting around a table and everybody's collectively working on something, like collaborating on it, versus coming up here and being put on the spot. I think at the, at the podium, or whatever we call it, I think that had a lot to do with this. I think that has a lot to do with best ways to communicate. I think that's part of it.
And just to confirm that everyone is getting the same information, because that has been a problem in the past, where I thought something was okay, and then I heard somebody ask a question, got a different answer. I, and then that caused me to ask an hour worth of questions. So, I, I don't see the problem in trying it. We're all relatively new, let's try it for a little bit and see if it helps.
I, I like trying it now while it's still daylight and maybe going back when it's still like right here.
Well, I mean, the, the idea is that, you know, even though we're starting an hour later, you, you, hopefully, will continue getting out at a decent time and, and, you know? And I know that's not always going to be easy because, you know, we've got twenty-five items on the agenda. You know, some of our past, we had forty-four and fifty. And, you know, there's going to come times where it's going to be fifty. And so, hopefully, this will just make it streamlined. But, you know, to me, the big thing is the, the occupier of this chair. And it's just trying to find a way that we can have, who we have entrusted to be the leader of our city, spending their time doing what they should be doing rather than talking to us about what's on the agenda, so.
So, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Cannon, can I ask you to verify, to amend your motion that we begin this process at the first meeting in July so we have enough time to advertise it and post it on the website? So, everybody's familiar with the new process.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve with the first time this starting and the first meeting in July. I didn't say it right, did I?
You got it.
All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes six to one.
You wait.
It's five to one.
Well, I think she would have been, no, I'm just kidding. It is five to one. Okay, so, we're going to go now to item twenty-four. Discuss and consider action on moving the July fourth, 2019, regular city council meeting to the proposed date of July ninth, 2019, or other appropriate date.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously.
And is that at seven o'clock? Yes, six o'clock and seven o'clock meeting, yes.
Let's go, number twenty-five. Discuss and consider an appointment to fill a seat vacated by the former city manager on the tax increment reinvestment zone, TERS number one, and development authority boards, and to fill the unexpired term of board chair, expiring December thirty-first, 2019, on the TERS number one and development authority boards. So, if, um, if anybody would volunteer, that would be awesome.
I mean, this is typically a spot.
Not everybody at once?
This is typically a spot, we're discussing, right?
Excuse me?
This is discussion? Okay, um, just want to make sure I'm following rules. This is typically, um, these are, these are all area, these are all seats that were filled by our former, um, city manager?
One seat.
One seat, okay.
And, um, they meet as needed.
Okay.
And you know what, I'll volunteer if, if nobody else wants to. I'd be glad to volunteer. Okay. And, um, we're not nominating somebody for the chair, although he was the chair, because then the TERS board is going to meet and decide on the chair, correct? Oh, it is, appointed? Okay, so do we need to do that now, too? Or are we appointing for? Okay.
Do we have anybody from city staff on these boards?
No, there is county commissioner, there is, uh, two from the county, and three from the city. Currently, the city is?
Delvin Oy and Commissioner Longbow from the county, Justice Echols and Gents.
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 Crossaniki is also appointments.
Should we have somebody-
As long as the city manager was the appointment of y'all.
Should we have somebody from staff?
Ultimately, it's within council's discretion to make the appointment, so the should is ultimately within your discretion to determine. It's not improper or unusual for, particularly since you're the participant in the TERS that you have, you've got a city representative on the board, so don't forego that opportunity to have either council or staff. Just take into account the different type of, I guess, source of information you're gonna have available from the person who serves in that position. So, staff member's gonna have a certain level of information, knowledge about the city and the council member's gonna have kind of a different point of view on it. So, I think that's what I can offer as far as you're making your decision.
What sorts of things does the TERS board deal with?
The TERS board deals with the approval of particular agreements related to the, so first of all, there's a project plan. The project plan is what sets out what projects or categories of projects can be funded from the TERS revenues. The city and the county each participate with 50% of property taxes within the TERS and that those property taxes are used to fund approved projects within the TERS. The project, so there's a project plan and that sets out categories of projects. So the TERS board is charged with approving, making amendments to that project plan, which are recommended and then they go to the council for approval. So there's a, you know, those are basically kind of infrastructure projects. The second thing they do is they consider proposals from developers who wish to apply for use of those TERS funds to fund certain projects related to developments. And so developers will come make proposals to the TERS board to get approval for use of those funds and then the TERS board approves the agreements. Those agreements then go to council for approval as well.
And when do they meet?
They meet when, as needed, during the day.
During the day?
Yeah, that's how it's done. And so, if you want to consider, one thing to consider is the council is going to see these agreements as well. So the council will approve these agreements. The initial evaluation of the project happens at the TERS board level, so they'll hear details about the project and consider options. There may be some projects that come before the council for their own kind of quote-unquote dog and pony show, just depending on the project.
And is it possible that we appoint somebody now as just sort of an interim until we have a new city manager and can reconsider?
Yes, that's an option that you could consider. If you wanted to designate that as an interim post, you could do that as well.
Oh, okay.
I mean, just to make it clear so that there's not a ex-
If we rescind it later, nobody is-
Yeah, you know, it's not offensive or-
I never felt that the city manager should have been on the TERS board, quite frankly, just because when you think about it, the city having three votes, right? So you've got the city manager making a case, which we did, for the Northline Development as an applicant theoretically. I mean, my question was, you know, was he gonna go stand there and then run around and sit here? And I think that creates a problem when there are instances where the city could be an applicant appealing to a TERS board where we control three votes.
So if you had a new city manager who was heavily involved in TERS, you wouldn't want them to have a seat on that board?
I think it's, I think it's a conflicting role. No, I think the city should be, you should have three good people, don't get me wrong. But I think that, the way that looked to me was very problematic in a lot of different ways. And I just think because inherently the city has the three votes and the city can be the applicant, and I think it's a very unusual role. So myself as mayor, I wouldn't be out, there would never be a situation where I would be out appealing to the TERS board for a project. Never.
If I can't, I just want to, I've heard this and I just want to, there are, we work with other entities that have TERSs and we work with a group that's very experienced in assisting and creating TERSs. And so the discussion about it's a conflict for the city to have its own representatives on the board, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak to the appearance, that's a, that's a community issue, that's a council issue. But it is not, it is not unusual for a council to serve as a TERS board, for city staff to serve as a TERS board. It's not, that is not an unusual and it's a common, a common thing.
Is it common for the, for a TERS that's been set up for a developer to apply for reimbursement on, it stands for tax increment reinvestment. So if there is no increment, what is the tax when the city becomes the applicant and the city's performing the work? There's not been anything created?
No, it's the improvement, so that's the public improvement. Again, these are policy issues and community issues to be decided by the city, the individual city, the individual needs of each city. But the TERS funds are spent on the infrastructure part. And so cities can choose to use it as a tool to install public infrastructure and then be paid back from the tax increment. That's, that's an option. Each one's set up differently. Again, there are organizations that, there are companies that could provide better insight than I can as to kind of the variety of how they're set up, that work around the state setting these up, so on-
I don't have to go back and see TERS number one pools and see if it was set up under that, under those guidelines, right? So, does it automatically, when you, when it's been 12 years and everybody's kind of done it one way, whatever that looked like, in this case, a developer performs work first, incremental tax is created by that work and then there is a means for them to be reimbursed under the TERS program?
The city has other infrastructure that they have applied for and are now getting reimbursement for. I think there's a water line, if I'm correct? Yeah, so there's a water line that the city has gotten or is getting reimbursed for that the city installed and then the county's also got a proposal for-
Did that water line help the entire development or did it help one development?
I can't speak to that, so someone would also have to answer that. And again, we're talking about community type decisions and political decisions that are made. And my point only was to say that it's not unusual if you, the council decides to choose a council member or city staff to serve on that board, particularly since you've got examples where the entire council serves or, in this case, there's currently not a city representative who's affiliated with the city. It wouldn't be unusual for you to have a city representative, either from staff or council. So, with respect to that question that you were asking, again, it's a council decision. I'm not really the one to make that decision for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, I'll be glad to do it, you know, or if anybody wants to step up and do it, that's fine too. I mean, typically they, I mean, I know a lot about it. I've been to most of the meetings in the last few years and we have them here typically. They are in the morning. And, you know, I pretty much know, this TERS expires in 2031, I believe. So, it's, it's kinda, it's got a lot of challenges and, you know, the question going forward is gonna be, does it get extended? Because if anybody comes to us tomorrow and says, I want to build a Taj Mahal, there's not gonna be enough time to get reimbursed to build a Taj Mahal because if it expires in 2031, you're not gonna have created the taxable value to be able to apply to reimburse yourself. So, it's got some challenges, but-
It's a unique TERS because a lot of TERS that my experience has been with are developer-created and as a way for a developer to approach the city to ask, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and develop this and I want reimbursements. The latest one on Wolf Ranch, developer-created. I believe Indigo Ridge is developer-created. This was city-created on 2,300 acres and it was designed and run for the first half of its life as a reimbursement tool. And then last year it got changed to front money. And that changed the way anyone else coming behind it could be reimbursed, spent all the reimbursable money, basically. So, I do think that we need a representative, but I have heard for years that there was a concern with the city manager being the chair, specifically the chair. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mayor Hill for place one for the TERS and development board.
So, Mayor Hill, how are you going to handle that when developers are coming to you wanting a deal from the city and you're also, you're both the mayor and on the TERS? Is there a conflict there?
I don't think so because, I mean, first of all, the TERS board votes as a board, number one. So the county has two votes and what the county has said recently is that they're not going, for instance, they're not gonna reimburse for residential. They're gonna, you know, they believe that this was set up to reimburse for commercial developments. So number one, I think that that's going to change because if, if the county's not going to participate, then the city has to go it alone, right? So then the question becomes, well, you know, are there other avenues, things like 380 agreements that the city can do outside of the TERS? I mean, the TERS has some challenges right now because of the projects that were approved last year and the timelines. So honestly, there, most of the developers that are in the TERS do not believe that they can bring a project and be reimbursed under the TERS because there's not enough time. So literally, I doubt seriously that there's gonna be, unless somebody just had something they could put on the ground immediately, and that's doubtful.
So then, would it make more sense to have an economic development director in that seat?
No, it doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
You know?
And when a TERS deal comes to us for approval, who's going to present it to us?
Who presents, I forgot who presented last time. Was it the city manager? Okay, so the city manager.
It would still be the city manager even though they're not the ones at the TERS meeting?
He was presenting because he was the chair.
Was he? Okay, so then it would be me. Yeah. I guess it would be me. I presented, it was in a city manager role.
Or the chair. If you name somebody other than the mayor as the chair, the chair could always present to the council.
Yeah.
So, filling the spot tonight, how do they figure out who's going to be the chair? Is it just whoever we fill or do they have to go vote?
No, the council appoints the chair.
Okay, and that would be a separate agenda item?
It says, it's listed here, so you can make it the same individual or a different individual. It's up to the councils.
I like the idea that we have a council person serving. Because we're elected, we represent the people, I think that that's a different perspective than a staff member. But of course, I would assume that the city manager would also attend these meetings as well.
Well, like I've gone to most of the TERS meetings in the last two to three years. So, and you've gone to some and, you know, there's a lot of people that go to them, so.
How many was that over two to three years?
You know, there was probably three and maybe two or three in the last year on Northline alone. And I don't think Crystal Springs ever went to the TERS board.
I don't think they got that far.
I don't think they got that far.
They were told that there wasn't any money left, from what I understand.
And I mean, I think, you know, I know that the challenge of the TERS right now is the length of time. And I think Northline's gonna face that challenge because they got approved for $12 million of TERS reimbursement money on the back end in addition to the 15 that was done in infrastructure on the front end. But if, you know, it's been a year and there hasn't been anything done, we're getting an update, some people are getting an update. But, you know, it's, there is a time crunch. They may not be able to recover much of that $12 million because there's not gonna be enough taxable value created in the next 12 years to be able to get it.
Well, the last TERS finance report that Mr. Powers gave us had a note down at the bottom that said the city's $15 million would not, would be, you can help me, Mr. Powers, correct me if I'm wrong, the city's $15 million TERS money would be reimbursed at something less than 14 million. Did I hit it correct? Okay. Which obviously that means less than 14 million, it could be 1 million or $1 or whatever. So the city is in line before Northline and then any other new developments come in after that. So if the city is, if the TERS board is already reporting that the city's going to be paid back less than the 15 million, then there's serious concern as to whether or not Northline's gonna see any of their 12 or that anyone else can receive anything.
One of the things that I think would be very helpful is if we had the county and the TERS board come in and maybe do a short workshop and talk about the TERS board.
That would be great.
Because, you know, there are gonna be issues for the other, there's plenty of other undeveloped tracks around the TOD that are probably not gonna be able to access TERS because of 12 years left.
Right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to correct my answer.
Please, please.
So it was correct at a time.
Okay.
But what has happened at the last TERS board meeting where the county presented its San Gabriel Parkway reimbursement agreement and the board voted to approve that agreement, it has not come to city council yet, but it may be on your next agenda. The county San Gabriel Parkway agreement, as approved by the TERS board, would come ahead of the city. But the discussion at the, the agreement for the county is that after the priority projects, the other projects that have been approved have been paid their annual allotment, then the balance of the remaining funds for that year, 65% would go to pay the county agreement and 35% would pay the city agreement. Theoretically, the city might end up with less money than the original proposal, but it also could be paid off sooner if significant development happened. So, the original city agreement was our debt service reimbursed each year. And since our debt service is 20 years and the TERS had 13 left, it wasn't gonna get its full. Under the new arrangement, if it gets approved by the city council and the city, or the commissioners court, then there's a potential for the city and the county to get reimbursed fully within those 12 years, depending on development.
Right.
I wanted to clarify that just because it's new development.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you.
So there's been talk with the county of extending the timeline of the TERS, right? So they've indicated a willingness to extend the TERS, which then we would have to vote as a council to extend the TERS as well, in sync with what they're doing. We would agree to, you know, whether it's 20, whatever, seven years, just pick seven years.
It is the city's TERS, so the county couldn't do it unilaterally, but they could join to get the-
Correct, absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. But if we voted, they wouldn't have to universally, they wouldn't have to do it just because we voted to, because it expires in 2031, so they're not bound to.
They're not, but the city could extend its shift.
It's a portion of it, correct.
Maybe, we're off topic of the agenda item.
Sorry.
Okay.
This is why we need a discussion time. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
I feel that.
There's a motion- There's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
No, sir, we don't have a second. We have just a motion.
Oh, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to...
I'm sorry, to clarify, this is just for the appointment, or is it the appointment and the unexpired term of the chair?
It's, my motion is for the full agenda subject, which is to appoint Mayor Hill to the TERS board and the Development Authority Board of, unexpired term of the board chair.
To include the board.
To include the board chair as the agenda item.
Is that your second?
That's my second.
Okay. All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes six to one.
No, it's five to one.
Or five, gosh. Michelle, where are you? All right. Hope you're having a good time somewhere. Okay, so we're going to go back to, we are going to reconvene, recess back into executive session pursuant to Sections 551.071 and 551.074, Texas Government Code in Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to deliberate the appointment of an interim city manager, deliberate the appointment of the city manager, to consult with legal counsel regarding the city manager's employment agreement. The time is 7:56. We are in executive session. All right, the time is now 9:48, and we are reconvening out of executive session to take action pursuant to Sections 551.071 and 551.074, Texas Government Code in Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to deliberate the appointment of an interim city manager. Pro temp, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we'll take no action.
Two, to deliberate the appointment of the city manager.
I make a motion to nominate Mayor Troy Hill, Councilmember Jason Shaw, and Mayor Pro Temp Chris Sterneck to create and implement a city manager task force.
I'll second.
And do we vote on this one, and then vote, and then, okay. All in favor? And three, to consult with legal counsel regarding the city manager's employment agreement.
We'll take no action.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to the addendum, item one, discussing, consider action on setting summer council retreat to be conducted on Friday, June 21, 2019, from noon to 4:00 p.m., and Saturday, June 22, 2019, from 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. This time, we're going to move to council comments.
Well, it's, it's late, isn't it? Oh, I'd just like to say, I didn't run off Michelle, in case anybody's wondering, I didn't scare her off. She's actually in, in France commemorating, helping to commemorate today. So, hi, Michelle. That's all. Oh, and we did have about 4,000 people on a rainy day that did come to Old Town Festival, so that should be acknowledged. So, thank you for everybody that participated in that. It was, that was very successful in spite of everything. Thank you.
Well, I've been shot at a time or two. I know what it's like to feel fear in combat. I cannot imagine 75 years ago, as those service members climbed down in those wooden Higgins boats in those high seas and hit those beaches. When they hit those beaches, they fought for each other. But they fought for that ideal that we could come and do what we do here in this democracy. We should never forget that. I know those of us that have fought will never forget that. Those men were brave, and they deserve to be remembered forever.
I will second all of that, but I also just want to say how excited I am to have all of the new council members up here, and I'm, I'm very excited. We are, we are moving this ship in a great direction. It makes me very happy. So, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also very grateful to be in the position that we're in right now, and just to see the dynamics that's going on in the city. I feel very, I feel very hopeful that things are moving in the right direction. I'm looking forward to knowing staff even more, but just in the last couple of weeks that we've been here, and to see the collaboration go back and forth, and to see the movement, it may not seem like that from the outside. I know it's going to take time on the outside to see some of these things come to fruition, but I'm very excited to be part of this, and I'm very, very happy just for staff in general for being accepting of me and answering my questions as we go through this too. So, thank you.
Okay, we've been talking about it for months, and today was finally our blood drive throwdown with Cedar Park. So, before we get to our numbers, I just wanted to thank We Are Blood and their staff for coming out for six hours and, and hanging with us, and Cheryl Arnold at the fire department, who was wonderful with getting everything set up and, and rolling with whatever we threw at her, Chelsea Hile with PD, who is amazing and a wonderful right hand. You're very lucky, chief. Sharksburger for donating hundreds of dollars' worth of food and helping promote the blood drive. Christian Brothers Automotive, the two owners, I met them this morning, they both donated blood, and they brought me lunch. Like, it was super awesome. And it's really, a lot of times, we're up here, and all we hear are negative things. You know, the emails that we get and, and things that we read, and even some of our behind-the-scenes stuff. And to go out today and spend the day where residents from all over town and staff and everybody's putting aside their differences and just coming together to do good was amazing and humbling, and I love you guys. This is such a great city, and I hope we can preserve that. So, final numbers. Cedar Park had 23 donations. Leander had 32.
Yeah!
So, altogether, that is 55 donations, and each donation can help about three people. So, between our two cities, we have touched 165 lives, which is amazing. So, kudos to Cedar Park, kudos to us, and, and thank you, We Are Blood. That's all.
Awesome, awesome. You know, I'm going to echo some of those comments about just the, you know, we kind of hear the, sometimes the circus that goes on in different aspects of life, but, you know, I can tell you, I'll just relay something, you know, we had a client come in that possibly might be moving here. And you know what? We told them about the city, and we didn't fudge anything, we didn't, you know, lay on the molasses, and we, we just told them about our city. And I think there's a really good chance that they want to be here, because they called me the next day, and, and they kept talking about wanting to be a part of the community. And I think that's what we're going to see in the next year, the next two years, the next five, the next 10, is that we're going to see people want to be a part of this community. And that's an exciting time, and I'm excited. And everything else is all just, you know, it's all just white noise. But the things that we're doing and building a community are what's going to be lasting, and we get the chance to do it. So, it's an exciting time, and we've got a great staff, and we've got a great police chief, and we've got a new guy coming in as our fire chief we're excited about. We're going to have a, we're going to find a city manager that is the right leader to guide our staff and our city, and it's, it's a great time to be in Leander, Texas. So, with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn. All right, so be it. Thank you.